Right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Hey, everyone. I'm Kristin Stevens and I'm County Commissioner in District Two. So it's nice to meet all of you finally. It feels like it's been a while and I'm sure we would have met sooner if it were not for the pandemic. So but I'm excited to work with all of you and to meet you. I will be serving on the Upper Front Range Transportation Planning Commission. And so I don't know who your representative, if your mayor, Mayor Coney is the representative to that. But you know, so please feel free to lean on me for any kind of help you might need on that board or anywhere else. Nice to meet you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Commissioner Jody Shattick-Ballie for District Three, which is your district. Behind me is a picture of Rocky Mountain National Park Lily Lake. I was born and raised in Northern Colorado, so I've been coming up to Estes and Estes Valley and Rocky for every year for my entire life. I love to hike 100 miles in Rocky every year at least, and I'm up there at least once or twice a month. And I'm grateful to get to know all of you. And I've been up there actually a couple of times already to meet with Mayor Wendy and some others. And so I look forward to coming through and maybe getting a chance to grab a cup of coffee or get to know you face to face as it safely can be safely done. And feel free to reach out to me at any time, and I appreciate Mayor Wendy and Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Marchink joining me again for a community conversation this Thursday from noon to one on Zoom. And we invite you all to come join us. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaking for or beginning for Visit Estes Park, I'm Deborah Gibson. I'm the current chair. I've been with the Visit Estes Park Board for about three years now. I've been a business owner and a worker in Estes Park since the mid 70s. And one of the things that I was most concerned with in joining the Visit Estes Park is to contribute, continue to build our year round season. As a former worker in Estes Park, I knew the pain of being unemployed for six months out of the year. So we have built a much stronger off season over the existence of Visit Estes Park. And I want to continue to contribute to that. I really appreciate meeting the two new commissioners. I had the privilege of meeting Commissioner Cavallis last fall. And we wanted to make sure that we started some open communication between the three entities. So we could share what we believe are accomplishments with, you know, for the community, both the county and the town. Thank you for being here.
My name is Sean Jurgens. I'm Vice Chair of the Visit Estes Park Board. And I've been on for about five years now. Thank you.
All right, I'll go as a hybrid creature, if you will. My name's Scott Webermeyer. I was appointed to the Town Board of Trustees. What was it? August after coming in for the two previous elections. Relative to the marketing district, I was on the original board and spent eight years on the marketing district board. Having termed out probably five years ago, I'm currently an appointee to the marketing district board as a trustee for the town. And I've been in business in Estes Park for the better part of 45 years anyway.
So I am Marie Sinak. I am a trustee for the town of Estes Park. And I'm also sit on the board for Visit Estes Park. I've been a trustee for three years and have been on the Visit Estes Park Board, I think, two years, if that's right, Deb. And I have run a business here in Estes as a veterinarian for 25 years. So that's my history. And one more to the next person.
Sure, I'll go next. My name is Carly Bangs. I'm on the board. I've lived up in Estes since 2009. And I was elected in 2018 with Marie. And I do have some spotty internet, so hopefully everyone's able to hear me and I don't lose you in the middle of the meeting. But it's nice to see everybody's face.
Hi, I'm the trustee Youngland, Cindy Youngland, born and raised here in Estes Park. Business owner as well, new to the board this last April. So almost a year under my belt. I look forward to meeting everyone face to face commissioners when we get that opportunity. So I am involved heavily in the lodging. That's my business. So Visit Estes Park has always been in the forefront of my business. So I look forward to having a great meeting and meeting everyone.
My name is Barbara McAlpine. I'm also one of the newbie trustees elected last April along with Cindy. I've lived in Estes Park. This is my seventh year, so I do not have the long background that most of y'all have. I have no business background, but I do. I'm a shopper, so I connect in that way if no other way. I serve as the town board liaison to our planning commission. And if you were to describe me in one term or another, it would probably be something having to do with the environment because that's really my passion. And it's good to meet you all, and I'm definitely looking forward to in person somewhere down the line. Thanks.
And I guess I'm the last person on our board that's here. I don't see the mayor here yet. I'm Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Marchink. I've had the privilege of serving in this role as Mayor Pro Tem now for about a year. I was just reelected to my second term to the Town Board of Trustees last year. And we'll be serving, God willing, until the year 2024. Let's see. Is there any other board members for Visit Estes Park that we have missed or we jumped over? Or did we get everybody?
Mayor Pro Tem, I just wanted to, I'm helping the mayor troubleshoot a technical issue, so she's on her way, just not quite here yet.
And while we're waiting for the mayor colleagues, I'd like to give our county manager and assistant county manager an opportunity to introduce themselves, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll start with the staff introductions around the room. I'm Linda Hoffman, Laramore County Manager. New respect for you Estes Park residents after shoveling snow at a depth that we seldom see down here in the valley. So my hat's off to all of you.
If I get unmute, I'd be dangerous. I'm Larinda Volker. I'm the Assistant County Manager. And I think it's, you know, pretty great that we can still have this meeting, given all the snow we both got over the weekend, that no one has to travel and we can still keep this on our calendars and go forward. So it's nice to meet you all. Look forward to working with you.
Pro Town Marching, if we could get maybe the interim CEO to introduce herself, that would be great.
Hi, I am Abby Hevner. I'm with Visit Estes Park. Thanks, Marie, for that. I was gonna see if Travis wanted to go, but thanks for putting me forward. I have been with Visit Estes Park for about five years now. I'm the Director of Stakeholder Services, and right now I'm filling in as CEO until we hire a new one. So with that, I'll pass it off to Travis.
Thank you, Abby. And I will defer because we have the mayor on. We were able to troubleshoot that technical issue. And I believe she's with us now.
Hello, welcome, everyone. Sorry I didn't join you at the very beginning. Nice to see all of you. And I'm Wendy Coney. I'm the mayor of Estes Park. Welcome. Hi, Susie. Happy to see you.
And last and least, I'm Travis Mahalik. I'm the town administrator, and I'm happy to be with you all here today.
All right, welcome, Mayor. I think we're ready to jump right into our agenda, starting with Visit Estes Park Purpose and Role Introduction.
Sounds good.
Wonderful. Thank you. Am I able to share my screen? Is that?
You should be able to if they give you control over that.
If you want to navigate to the share screen, there you go, Abby.
There we go. Cool. Thank you. Okay, wonderful. So thank you again. My name is Abby or Abigail. I, just a little bit of background knowledge on me and why I'm giving you guys this presentation. So I am definitely one of those kids that started coming out here when I was about eight years old. I grew up in Omaha, Nebraska, and thankfully, my family was fortunate enough to move out to Fort Collins, Colorado when I was about 13. So we did, I consider myself a Colorado girl. I've now spent more time here than I ever did in Omaha. And I loved Estes Park as a kid. I would put on my little headphones and we'd get in our Astro van. And I'd have my Walkman listening to The Who and Bruce Springsteen on my way across the state of Nebraska on I-80 to Estes Park. It was a delight. It was always exciting. We spent one of the best Easters at a resort up there in town. And we had a hot tub in our room. It was just like the coolest thing ever. Because when you're 12, that's just amazing. So, okay, it's amazing now. I'm not gonna lie. So I, when I went to school, I realized that the only thing I really liked to do is art and go on vacation. And so I decided that I should probably get a degree in one of those. And I decided to get my degree in Recreation, Tourism and Hospitality. And then thankfully, I found an internship with Jellystone. Peaked very early in my career at Jellystone, being Activities Director there. I mean, it doesn't get better than doing ceramics, painting pottery, acting as Yogi Bear, playing laser tag in the woods. So since then, it's really just been downhill, but this is an okay second job that I can live with. So that's kind of my story and how I ended up here. I've worked around town. I've worked in the food industry. I even did a little gig at the high school for a little bit. That was a fun, interesting job. And so I know this town. I love this town. I know this community. I worked with the Rocky Mountain Conservancy, which is the nonprofit arm of the national park. So I like to kind of consider myself well rounded in the details of Estes Park. So I hope that I can answer any questions you guys have during this presentation. Please feel free just to cut in and stop me. My mom called me motor mouth growing up, and so just cut in whenever you need to. But I wanted to start out with a really cool quote from Ms. Gibson. She is our board chair. And of course, you can all read here, but I do kind of want to take you guys through this because there's really interesting things in here that Deb is talking about. So, and I've heard this 1,000 times over and over again. We used to only be a summer destination. Actually, when I first started working in Jellystone, one of the managers there told me, oh, yeah, come winter, you can walk down the street and no one's going to be there. Well, I haven't seen that in a long time, even during COVID. We've had a lot of people up here in the winter. So Visit Estes Park has been working very hard to be a year round constant, constant destination for our guests to come to. So a couple of things that I wanted to include in here is that Visit Estes Park has had a long history. We've kind of transformed into a few different things. Visit Estes Park itself was started in 2010. I will, or 2010 was the final official date. But before that, there were two ballot measures. One to create a local marketing district and the other one to fund it, and both of those passed with town support. And we've gone through a couple of transitions. At one point, we were with the town in marketing. The town provided funds for us to market to our guests. At another point, we were into being a CBB. And I know Susie was brought in around 2004, and so she has way more history and knowledge on this than I do. For reference, I graduated high school in 2010. So when this was all starting, I was on my way to school, very excited to be in Greeley, Colorado. And I definitely made it up here a few times during that time, but had no clue this was all going on. So what we've done is we've separated it from the town to become a local marketing district. Our funds are collected from the 2% lodging tax. So anytime somebody comes and stays at a hotel, a campground, a lodge, whatever it may be, they, the guest pays a 2% lodging tax. The state collects that 2% lodging tax. They give it back to us, and that's how we're funded. It's a pretty fun way to handle things because it is our, our businesses are collecting that money. And so they can see how that comes in. And I know that we have a couple lodging people here on our board, and they can always speak more to that on how that 2% lodging tax is collected and what that does to fund us. And I want to go through and kind of talk about that. Let me go down here to the next slide. So above, oh, let me go back up here because this was really cool. Sorry. Where was that one quote? Okay, so this is what always gets me is that our tourism tax dollars contribute about 67% of the town's budget with needed services for our community. So 67% of the dollars that are going into funding our community are coming from our guests. Those are tourism dollars. It shows that people love to come here. One little story I always love to tell from Derek at the museum is within 10 years of Joel Estes stepping foot in Estes Valley, this place became the number one destination for our Colorado ones to visit. We have always been a playground. We always will be a playground. We want our guests to come here. We want them to enjoy vacation. I want people to come here, just like I did when I was a little eight year old kid and fall in love and come back and support our community somehow. Moving on from that, so this, these are some of the things that the money that tourism brings in helps with the town. So for example, we have about 114, Travis, correct me if I'm wrong, full time staff with the town. And so that's a lot of tourism dollars that can fund their salaries and go home and feed their families. And they can build a life here and support our community that way. We have helped support the Free Summer Shuttle program, getting our guests around as well as our locals. If they're working, they can get around and go to their jobs and not have to take up as much parking, that kind of thing. We have a 52,000 square foot event center that was helped funded by our guests that come into town. We have over 40 restaurants. We have an Estes Valley Fire Protection District. And the staff is staff paid by, oh, I'm sorry, it is staffed by paid employees and volunteers. So that's something cool that we have. Excuse me for a minute. Moving on from there, our tourism dollars do in fact fund our police department as well, which we have a police captain, a sergeant, two investigators and two patrol sergeants, 12 patrol officers and seasonal community service officers. Did anyone last year, was it the year, is the year before, see that girl that just killed it? She was a community service officer, and she was like working the signs and she had like all these dances and cool moves. She was a blast. We heard about her from our guests. And so it's a fun interaction to see our, our locals and our employees here in the town making our guest day. I mean, she was just so darn cute. She was doing all sorts of things, getting people's attention and dancing and making everybody smile. And so that's a fun thing that tourism dollars can fund to keep people coming in. So one more thing on that real quickly, though, is that we do, with those tourism dollars, we're able to fund our recreation. Okay, notes. We're able to fund our Recreation and Parks District. And that is actually pretty cool because we have 26 staff for recreational services. And again, funds are coming from tourism dollars. They are able to pay that 26 staff. That money goes back into our community when they feed their kids, go out to restaurants, their kids go to our schools. They pay our teachers. It all kind of funnels in with one another. We are a tourism community, and so that's how we operate. We have our community center, which is absolutely gorgeous and beautiful. If you haven't been there, please go there. It is so cool. It's amazing. And then we also have a marina with rentals and then two campgrounds. So all of those fun town things are funded in part with our tourism dollars. Okay, moving on. So this is how we do things. I kind of want to go through and show what we're all about and how we do things on our creative side. So let's start here. Leverage paid, owned and earned media to increase awareness of Estes Park as a destination inspiring visitors to choose Estes Park. Paid media, what we pay for to advertise, like sponsored content, display ads on third party, on third party sites in Facebook. Owned media is our own products that we make. So those are things that we use to inspire tourism and give travel ideas as well as stakeholders places to advertise in. So that would be things like our official visitor guide, our consumer e-newsletter that we send out, and then our beautiful website, which has the best coloring on it that I've ever seen. And then earned media, this is articles that journalists write after Rachel, who is our guru at all things press and media related. So she's happy to provide information to those journalists that are coming in. And it's considered earned because we don't pay to ensure that it's written. It's a relationship based thing. So let's say, for example, we have somebody in town doing a really cool event. And we tell our journalist, hey, so and so is doing this amazing event. The journalist comes, they go to the event, and then they end up writing about that. And that's not a paid thing. That's something that we earn by building those relationships, if that makes sense. Okay, this one is awesome. Our Athletes and Residents Program. This is cool because this is the first program of its kind in the country. We were the first ones to do something like this, and I think that's incredible. It's simple and pretty awesome. We invite a well known adventurer to live and play around Estes Park to create authentic stories about their time exploring as a local. So we will bring in somebody who's a little more hardcore, let me, a little more hardcore than myself, who's good at rock climbing, or maybe they do ice climbing, maybe they're mountain bikers. And we ask them to, to document their trip and show it through like an Instagram point of view or show it through their eyes to get followings. And it's very cool to get these high profile names. Speaking of high profile names, we have to, of course, mention our Tommy Caldwell. Another cool thing that we did, if you haven't seen it yet, we do have a Tommy Caldwell video that we did. And that's kind of an inspirational video that we made. And it was, it was a, an effort to tap into what makes Estes Park so cool is that we do have all these locals that you don't really know about. Actually, okay, this is kind of a funny story. I was at a wedding and I was working at a coffee shop at the time. And I went to this wedding and there was somebody there and I kind of like recognized him, whatever. And then I go and I work at the coffee shop the next couple, a couple of weeks later. And that person that I saw was at the wedding. And I was like, hey, don't I know you from somewhere? And he kind of like gave me a weird look. And I was like, yeah, 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 I saw you at so and so's wedding. And then he goes, oh, yeah, my name is Tommy Caldwell. And I was like, okay, yeah, nice to meet you. Like, I had no idea who this guy was. And then later in life, I find out that he's like this great, wonderful professional rock climber. And I was like, hey, don't I know you, acting like I'm starstruck or something. And it was just so embarrassing. But we wanted to show those cool things that we do, that we do have Tommy Caldwell up here in town. And so we have a beautiful video. It's what's awesome about the video is that it, let me go down here. It won an award. Let me find it really quick before I say too much. So technically, right now, we're not allowed to talk what this award is about, but we're allowed to say it. We were given an award that's the equivalent of the Grammys in the, or I'm sorry, the Oscars in the tourism industry. So that was a very exciting thing for us to get. It shows that we're reaching out and getting a very wide audience. So again, I'm going to pass this email, I'm going to pass this presentation out, and we'll have a link to the video. If you haven't watched it, please do. It's really cute. He's got his kids in it. They're eating smores. It just goes to show what a lifestyle we have up here and encourage people to come up here and get a little taste of that lifestyle when they go on vacation. Okay, so a few other things that we've done is billboards. These crack me up because we did special placement on I-70. And so when all of our friends on I-70 are stuck in traffic and only seeing bumpers and taillights, they can see a beautiful view of maybe what life would look like if they would have turned the other way and gone to Estes Park. We don't have that bumper to bumper traffic getting up the hill. It's a little more quiet here, especially in the winter time. It's a perfect escape. So we have our billboards on I-70. And then I loved this project that we did in the Denver International Airport. Those big pillars that you see when you're going through security, we got ads on those, and that was so exciting. My dad travels a lot and took a photo of one when he was down there, and it just made my day. It was wonderful to see. Another thing that we're pretty proud of and that we work on a lot are blogs. We, as you guys know, social media has taken over and part of that is blogging. I, out of all the things that started, I would not have thought that blogging would have stuck around as long as it did, but it has, and it has a following. And so this is where we provide inspiration and our travel ideas to our guests that are coming. This is fun because we get a lot, a lot of the time, we get a chance to partner with businesses. So we'll be able to do something along the lines of this year, since everything's canceled. We wanted to do a recreation of the winter events. So in our, let me find it here. So we did a how to create our winter events that you're missing. So it was still to come here and participate in things, but do it on your own. So for example, like we had the wine and chocolate event up here. So we encourage people to go over to Snowy Peaks and get a, do a wine tasting and then maybe get a bottle to take back to their hotel room and then head over to Rocky Mountain Chocolate Factory or any of the factories and candy shops that we have all downtown. So we make sure that we're showing our guests there's other ways to travel up here, things that they maybe wouldn't have thought of. So that's a really fun place to do blogs, or I'm sorry, to share information in our blogs. And one thing that I really like about the blogs is that we offer anyone to write these. We will always take suggestions and we want help with those. And so what I always tell business owner is if you want to kind of get your business out there and known, send us your story. Tell us things about your business, how you came up to Estes Park, how your dream came true, and we can always share that story and then get our guests involved. And they can be like, oh, I heard about this place when I was reading the blog and they might want to stop in. And that's just a free form of advertising and for our stakeholders and also a great way to inspire our guests. Okay. So these are magazine and display ads. We've recently, I would say in the past two years, have kind of changed our look a little more intense. Those, that bright, beautiful blue sky that we always see up here that we're so lucky to have. And kind of more interesting, bold taglines. One of my favorite ones up there is bring your own high speed quads. And that's for people who are skinning up backcountry skiing. So that's where those leg muscles, you gotta get up there to come back down. So that was kind of a fun thing that we did going through. And again, these third, these ads are run through third parties. And so that might be something like within a magazine, if we're working with Outside Magazine or Backpacker. If we're doing outside, and then also over on the right hand side, those are our online ads. And so we also partner with, with websites that correlate with our guests and what we're trying to do. So for example, we use Outside Online a lot, and that's to get those people that are wanting to go adventure in the backcountry, spend a lot of time outside and then maybe come in town for a glass of wine, some beer, a great meal somewhere. So that was a fun project that we did. Okay. So this is our sponsored content. Sponsored content are articles that we sponsor. And how that works is they're written by a writer of the publication that's running it. So that will mean that we look for an audience that we'd like to attract. And we reach out to that publication. They come here and they write about it, and then they put it in their publication. And so those are really helpful to support our marketing goals. And it's always great to have an outside perspective or point of view, bringing in what they think of Estes Park to get other readers and other visitors. This one, this next one is so cool. So we did a Estes Park in your backyard campout. So COVID changed everything. It is so sad. Everyone said it, but I can't get over it still. I'm gonna say COVID changed everything. It makes me angry. But what we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that we were still on people's mind. May was when things were kind of starting to open back up, and maybe there would be some safe travel. So we wanted to make sure that we were top of mind for our people. So we invited people to do a campout in their own backyard. So set up a tent, have a great time outside, enjoy the summer. And then we asked them to tag us, and it was Tag Estes Park. And we did an award. So if you would tag us, we randomly selected winners. And those winners received a little goodie basket with goodies from businesses all around town. So that was a great way for some of our businesses to advertise, to get new guests that maybe they hadn't thought of. And it was still a great way to be, be involved in our guests while they weren't here. Because it was sad and we didn't get them. Um, let me see. Okay, so this next slide, I can't. So this is earned media, and this is what Rachel does. Rachel's our fantastic PR gal, and this is what she hassles people for. If you are on our email list, you will see that Rachel sends out emails all the time asking for cool new things that are going on in Estes Park or what a business is up to, or if they have a historical story that they'd like to share, anything along those lines. We always try to, we always try to Anything along those lines, we always try to, we always try to connect one of these media pieces with a really cool business, and we open that up to all businesses. All it is, is you have to communicate with us, and let us know that you have something you'd like to offer up. These are a couple of the big names that we were in, I mean, look at those, those are awesome, The Wall Street Journal, Travel and Leisure. They're great, they're wonderful, Conde Nast, I have only ever seen that one in luxury car commercials, so I was super excited that we were in Conde Nast. That was amazing. Okay, so next thing I want to get into, this is our owned media, so these are the things that we do. This is how we provide our guests with the detailed information to assist in trip planning. And we also, this is where our local businesses get to play as well. So we have our consumer e-newsletter that we send out to our guests. We'll put different things on there, like best hikes to take your dog on, or where to get a good cup of coffee, or all the different breweries to visit in town. So we just kind of keep our content fresh, and again, it's all about staying at the top of mind for visitors. To bring them up here, so we want to make sure that we're putting something nice and fun in their inbox every month. And one of, one of the things that I like about this is we'll always get like some sort of email where someone's real bummed out. And they'll be like, well, I got this email, and I wish I was in Estes now, thanks for sending this. And I know that they feel sad and bummed out, but it's also a great thing because they love us and they want to come back. And we know that they're reading our e-newsletters and that they will head back up here. Okay, so our next big chunk of what we do is we provide information for our guests. So that they can travel up here safely, they can do everything that they want to do. They can see the sites and take advantage of all the wonderful businesses that we have here in town. So our website, visitestespark.com is our big guy. He is everybody's baby that we love and keep feeding, and sometimes get angry with, but we love it so much that we keep working on it. I have seen two different versions of our website, and this is by far my favorite one, and I'm glad that we have it. We kind of switched things up about two years ago, just to stay competitive in the market and make sure that we're gathering, gathering the right imagery to really showcase our destination. With this, when we started to do the website, we hired a staff photographer. And that was just to make sure that we had the best photos of our place, our businesses in town. We offered every business that wanted one, a free photo shoot, so that we could use those photos on our website. And they could turn around and use them on their, on their marketing platforms, whatever they wanted to. If they wanted to go get a billboard of one of the photos that we took for them, great, wonderful, doesn't matter. So that was a big project that we added into this website to ensure that it did well. And then we also have a great team working on the website. We partner with Simple View, but really Josh and Rachel and Andrea have been working hard to get all of our information updated. To make sure things are accurate and current. Next things again, just to kind of go through is again, that consumer e-newsletter that we send out, Facebook, we're always on, and Instagram. We have someone dedicated to socials, so that we're constantly interacting with our guests. And this is my baby right here, the visitor guide. I was hired on many years ago to start selling the visitor guide, and it's still my absolute favorite thing to do. And no matter what job I ever take at this, I will demand that I keep the visitor guide. Even if I'm scrubbing toilets, I'm still gonna sell the visitor guide, I'm cool, because it is so much fun, I love it. Print media, okay, so I should backtrack, the reason I love the, the visitor guide is because everywhere I've ever gone on vacation, I've always tried to find one. You want to take that home with you, you want to look at it when you're there, you want to see what's going on. And so our visitor guide, we went through redesign, the same time we were going through our website redesign. Which meant for a lot of sleepless nights, but we eventually got there, and it's a beautiful showcase, so we're happy to have it. The, the visitor guide now is more based on content and storytelling. Rather than just something that goes through and lists all the businesses. We want to make sure that we're drawing our guests in with a story, rather than just a, hey, this is where you can get your food, this is where you can sleep, and this is what you can do in the meantime. So our visitor guide, if you haven't seen it, please pick one up. I'm excited to announce that we did take a break because of COVID. However, we will be having a new visitor guide out this December. Perfect in time for the holidays, and maybe what we do, since people have been stuck inside so much from COVID. We do something along the lines of why give a gift when you can give an experience? And hopefully, people will start planning their travel to Estes Park during Christmas time for family reunions and that kind of thing. So if they get the gift for Christmas of, hey, this summer, we're gonna go on an Estes Park trip. Then they have all, all spring to plan it and make it fun with our visitor guide. Okay. Guys, I promise we're getting to the end here, I'm so sorry that I've taken so long. Um, but this, I just have to brag about us really quick. Aggregated visitor reviews on top travel platforms rank Estes Park as the top destination. That is the one sentence that I can sum it down to without getting too crazy. But we, for example, Expedia aggregated verified user reviews. And we were ranked in the top fifty destinations, which is incredible. I mean, that's, there's so many places to go in America, and we were in the top fifty. And then also, oh, and we were also only one of three from that region, from our region. So in, they named fifty, and we were one of three in the Rocky Mountain region, so that's a very exciting place. And I, that's a very exciting place to be on our, on our wins, I would say. So one other thing on here, move on. Is this is our recent industry recognition, as well as being as forward-thinking to the guests as we can. We also like to make sure that we are staying on top of things in-house. And so this, this is the award I was telling you guys about earlier when I got excited. So this is the 2020 HSMAI Award winner. So the details of this one are currently embargoed until the end of March, so we can't really talk about it, but we can tell you that we got one. And this is the Oscars of the travel industry, so we're kind of a big deal, you know. Working the things out, and then we also got the PRSA Bronze Anvil Award for an online video, and that was the Tommy Caldwell one. So when I spoke earlier, I mixed the two of them up. So that's exciting stuff. Okay. Next, I wanted to show what we do for the community. So these are some of the things that we offer to our guests, as well as our business owners, as well as our managers. And our locals and community members here in town. So we've been working on getting our COVID-19 resources put together. We have a community events calendar that we always encourage people to send us information, so that we can get it all up on one calendar. How great would it be if we got everybody to send all of the information of going on and what's going on in town on one calendar? So we don't all have to go to the same meeting three times in a row. It'd be fun to have one calendar with all the cool things that we do in Estes Park on there. So we're working towards that, and we also have a service directory on our website. Again, you get a free listing for any businesses, this can be for automotive or any service that's not necessarily directly related to tourism, we are making sure that we get that information. And then also, to share with our guests, we have our last-minute availability. So when someone comes into town and they need a place real quick, or maybe they signed up for a nice, beautiful suite, and then decided to bring their eighteen labradoodles with them, and need to find somewhere that's a little more pet-friendly. We help with that with our last-minute availability. We have an events calendar for our guests, and also our locals alike, and that showcases all of the cool happenings around Estes Park. Whether that's live music, whether that's a car show that's going on, or whether that's the wool market, that we will make sure that our guests know about that. We have a printable guest preparedness brochure, always important to educate our guests on what they need to be doing when they're up here. Again, our blog is, anyone can get it. We are reintroducing the Happenings flyer that went away for a little bit, but by popular demand and lots of emails, we're bringing that back. Because I, it turns out people really liked it, and that was great feedback to hear. We're also keeping up to date on our restaurants that offer takeout due to COVID and all that things, and all those things. And then also, you can have official visitor guides shipped to your guests, so we will do that for anyone. If you have a group coming out here, and you want to make sure they all get visitor guides, we are happy to do that for free. All right, let me move on. So this is more, I'm not going to go through everything here, but this is kind of what we offer for our business owners and managers. We have an online platform where they can, so online link into Visit Estes Olive. My dog's name is Olive, so that's why it's a dog. Oh, Mayor Koenig, are you asking a question? I'm sorry, you're on mute.
I really wanted to know what your acronym stood for, for the awards that you earned. I don't know what the acronyms stand for.
You know, I don't have those either, let me ask Rachel, and I'll send them out to you afterward. Yep, absolutely.
Keep going, you're doing a great job.
Thank you, Mayor.
If I, if I may, Mayor Koenig.
Yeah, of course.
Yes.
And I agree that, well, first of all, I'm not sure who's facilitating the meeting, because I'd like to get permission to use first names. But that said, I, I think we blocked out an hour for this meeting, and we now have fifteen minutes left. And I was really hoping to get an update on, to provide some context for, you know, why we discussed having these meetings on a, perhaps on a quarterly basis, and also get it, ask for an update regarding the, you know, the CEO search and a few other things. But is that, is that still the plan for today, or?
That is, that is, and we are running over, I didn't know this was going to take quite so long. And Patrick was nice and covered for me, and was going to continue facilitating. Our next agenda item is the open comments. And I don't know if you all have another meeting to attend at four o'clock, or if you're able to stay online a little bit longer.
First of all, Mayor Koenig.
Just call me Wendy, that's fine.
So that's, that's one thing I wanted to get clarified, thank you. And again, I don't want to cut into Abigail's presentation, but I, you know, I don't know what, we don't have a whole lot of time to have a discussion on some of the issues that we talked about last fall. And I wanted to at least begin that conversation, so.
Let me see if Abby can just summarize, so we can have a few minutes to begin that conversation. Abby, are you at a point where you could do like a summary slide for us?
Absolutely, I'll go really quick.
Thank you.
Yep, these are the community organizations and associations that all of our staff are involved in. We have eight people on staff, and all of us are super involved in the community doing things. And one thing that I noticed, and that's because Rachel is modest and put together this, this project. Is she did not mention on here that she's a firefighter, we have Rachel on our team, and she worked her bum off last fall. Doing Visit Estes Park work and putting out fires, literal fires, which was quite impressive. So again, I just wanted to quick show our staff, look at them, aren't they so cute? That's us, that's the gang, and that was kind of all I had to go through. We have more information on our visitestespark.com/transparency, where you can find all this cute staff. We all live and work here, and we love the outdoors, and we have a great time here, so, okay, quick, sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine, thank you, it was a nice presentation. And John, perhaps for the next presentation, you know, we can all get together and figure out an agenda. So Abby has specific things to address, or perhaps whoever the new CEO is of Visit Estes Park can do that for us. Town Administrator Maholic?
Yeah, Mayor Koenig, I will note that the next two items, one of them is the reporting relationship agenda item, and I think that was one of the things that Commissioner Kafalos referenced, and then the open discussion. So we, we don't have a whole lot of time left, but those are the two remaining agenda items on our agenda today.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with the next agenda item, please. Is there a staff report on this, or just general conversation?
Mayor, this was, yeah. No staff report, this was at the request of both the county commissioners and the town board to discuss what the reporting requirements ongoing would look like from Visit Estes Park to your two bodies, who are the oversight bodies for this organization.
Okay, John, do you want to start?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Wendy, and I, just to provide a little bit, excuse me, just to provide a little bit of context. So the previous Board of County Commissioners approved the 2021 Estes Park marketing plan on November seventeenth. And, and part of those deliberations, we asked for more information about marketing analytics. And, 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 you know, Visit Estes Park did a good job of providing an addendum, which was included to the operating plan that we approved on the, on the seventeenth of November, and I think that was submitted to the state on December, on December fifth. As furthermore, as part of those discussions, we asked for a letter from Visit Estes Park, the board. And Deborah, the, the chair, was gracious to, you know, worked, you know, work with your board to provide this letter. I think it's dated November twenty ninth, and in there, it, it references the, the, the website and the, and the data, the data dashboard, and I have a few comments on, on that, if I may. Mayor Koenig, and always with the eye towards being constructive and good constructive feedback. But in the letter, it talked about, it focused on the, the, the hiring process for the new CEO. And I, and I thought the six bullet points that were listed in that letter, you know, were very good. And so one of the things I had hoped to hear today was an update on, on how you're, how Visit, Visit Estes Park is doing in implementing those six bullet points, and, and looking at a, a director or CEO for Visit Estes Park. So that was one thing I was hoping, and then you, I'm sure you're aware, and Deborah's aware. In my response, I thought that was, that was great, but that there were some other aspects of, of these deliberations that weren't covered in that letter. And I hope that over time, we could, you know, we could get at those as well. I'll stop there for a moment.
John, I believe that Scott Webermeyer and also trustee Marie Sinak are actually on the selection committee. Do either of you want to speak to his questions?
Actually, Mayor, actually Wendy. Trustee Webermeyer, or Scott, as we like to call him, serves with myself and one of our other Visit Estes Park board members. Scott, if you would, could you give an update on where we are in the process?
Okay, thank you.
Well, specifically to John's question, I'm not familiar with what the six bullet points were that were responded to. Relative to the process. We hired a professional headhunter, for lack of a better concept, received eighteen applications. Ms. Graves went of that down to eight candidates that were to be interviewed by the search committee, one dropped out, took us to seven. We interviewed those seven and narrowed it down to two finalists. One of them dropped out, so this coming Wednesday, it's our intent to interview in public the solo finalist, if you will, for the boards. That being Visit Estes Park Board's determination of the appropriateness of this individual for the position. If indeed that's the case, the board will direct us to go into negotiations with that individual. And in the ideal circumstance, we'll hopefully have somebody seated by May one. Be very wishful thinking, but that, that's been the process. We've received applications from the immediate front range, as well as from across the country.
The, I, I'd like to add that, in part due to COVID, we did attract a lot of talent. This is a public interview, and I would encourage any of the commissioners to, to kind of listen in to the interview process. And get to know this candidate. We will hopefully have an update for you again. Probably in the next couple of weeks, but we moved along pretty close to the timeline, John, that we had talked about in the fall meeting, which was hopefully to identify and have a candidate by the end of March.
Thank you, Deborah, and thank you, Scott. And I, I don't want this to be just me participating, but I, I'm looking at the latter, and the last two bullet points of the six. Well, first of all, it's very good to, to see that you're making progress on, on selecting a CEO. But I'm looking at bullet points five and six, that the board, the VEP board has received presentations on three different options for recruiting a CEO, with a fourth presentation scheduled for our, for the meeting December one. I'm wondering if that, that step took place, because I think that's important, to look at the, the different ways, you know, to, to do recruitment of CEOs. Other than, and it looks like you've chosen a headhunter, so that's one thing. But even more importantly, Deborah and Scott and others, is the, the sixth one is we have solicited feedback from our current staff and leadership team on the expertise and leadership skills that they prioritize for a successful CEO. To me, perhaps, that's the most important thing, that there was an internal conversation, and also maybe reaching out to the community in terms of what are the, you know, what are the skill sets and the values and the, that you would want to prioritize to see in a new CEO. And I'm wondering if, if those kinds of things happen, Deborah, Scott, and Mayor Wendy.
Thank you, John, and one of the things I guess I should clarify, and to step back to, to And, and one of the things I guess I should clarify and to step back, um, to, to prior to when the actual process, the, the current process we're using, we did identify a couple, or I think three or four different models. Um, the one that we ended up using is kind, was kind of a hybrid that involved the staff. So we chose a recruiting consulting firm that had been used by the town of Estes Park before. And we used the talent of Visit Estes Park to be the entity that reached out to find the type of, um, uh, CEO we were looking for. So we, we first went to the, um, with Graves Consulting, they worked with our staff. We identified with the staff and the board, the skillset, the type of candidate we were looking for, um, all different kinds of scenarios that, that we, to qualify for, um, the initial group of interviews. And the Visit Estes Park marketing arm actually reached out to partners all over the country looking for those types of candidates. And then when we went on to the next, um, step, we worked with the board, the board appointed, um, a committee that, um, there were three members of the board and three members of staff that were on the interview and recruiting committee. Um, and I should specify that the staff wasn't on the committee, but they were, worked with the committee to identify questions. Um.
Well, they, they actually sat in as part of the non-finalist interview process. Abigail and two other members of the staff, plus three board members were the six-membered non-finalist interview committee.
Right, so that was extremely helpful. And as part of the, uh, um, the process, Graves Consulting had us compile all of our grading on various aspects of each candidate. Um, when we were able to narrow it down, it was actually very, um, we were all very happy to see that the staff, uh, grading of the, um, of the applicants and the board committee, uh, grades were almost identical. So we had significant agreement on that. So we really did involve the staff in this, in this search into the whole process. They were, they were a major part of it.
Thank you, thank you, Deborah, that's very helpful. And could you clarify just a little bit more, this next step is a, is a public in, uh, involvement step? Could you, you, you refer to it as a public interview, but I, I, I can't ima- could, could you help clarify that, yes?
It's, it's an interview conducted, uh, virtually online with the particular candidate. So the entire board, um, has received materials with regard to this candidate background, resume, uh, scores on the initial round of interviews. And the board will be conducting an interview with them, I believe it is two o'clock on Wednesday. Um, and so it is open to the public and we can make sure that the commissioners all get a, um, an invitation to that, right, Abby?
No, Deb, it's an interview by the board held in public. It's not our anticipation to have public comment or public questions, if you will.
Thank you for clarifying that, I didn't mean to infer that. But certainly the public is invited to listen.
Interesting, and the last thing I'll just mention, colleagues, because I know we're getting close to four and I've, I've sort of dominated this meeting and I, I apologize for that. But I know when we were discussing these matters back in, in the fall and in early part of this year, you know, the issues of transparency and accountability were really important. And it was great that you provided us with those marketing analytics and, and information about return on investment. I, I happened to quickly go to the, review the website, the Visit Estes Park website, which I think is a great website, uh, Abigail, uh, and all of that. But I, you know, the, the part about transparency and the data dashboard, I, I couldn't find how, unless you knew to write the word in transparency, I couldn't find how to get to that. So I wanted to offer that as feedback. I may have missed something, uh, but I, the only way I could get there is if I, I knew to put in, you know, visitestespark.org backslash transparency. And then when you go to the dashboard, uh, the, 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 the heading says something like, um, Visit Estes Park KPI, uh, dashboard. And nowhere does it identify what, what does KPI mean? And I had to look it up, that KPI me, I presume means, uh, key performance indicators. And maybe that's something that is used in the marketing world, uh, but the average person might not know what that means. So I just wanted to offer some feedback that based on my quick review of the, of the website pertaining to transparency and, um, and, and, you know, providing the, 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 uh, the analytics, uh, the, the data. Maybe there's some room for improvement, thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wants to make any comments at this time?
Are we in the comment stage?
We are, yes, please, Scott.
Just quickly, and given my history with, uh, with the organization and having watched it over the last five years, uh, there's probably been three times in the last five years when the operating plan's been brought to the town and the county that there's been suggestions that one or, or the other entities was prepared not to support the operating plan, hence that would end the marketing district. Uh, my only request of both groups is that there be some clarity on what the expectation is and what the frequency of the reporting is, so we don't get to September another year. And look at, uh, what Abby has quite frankly laid out as it's important economic driver for the Estes Park community to be held hostage for one item or the other. I think whatever that looks like. And John, I think the suggestion from the county in November was a quarterly gathering that may or may not be the correct approach. But in some fashion, Visit Estes Park, the local marketing district, needs to know what you're looking for, how frequently you want to see it, so that the next year's operating plan isn't ultimately a news hanging at the end of the, uh, of the diving board, if you will.
Well, I appreciate that, Scott. And, uh, a- again, we really don't have time to answer your question in, in, in great detail. So I, and, and I don't know whether quarterly meetings are the best way to go. But what my expectations for this meeting is, you know, to get an update on the CEO search. And I think we've received that in, in some of the interim steps. I've tried to offer some constructive feedback on the website because I think the transparency and the accountability thing is really important. So that's one expectation that I have, that we look at that and make it more user-friendly. And even looking at the data, some of it, that, you know, there was a, the, the, the little box that said a return on investment and it said 20, you know, I think it meant $20,000. It had a percentage sign, uh, where it should have had a dollar sign. I mean, there are little things like that that, you know, certainly could be improved upon. But I just want to make sure that we're being transparent and accountable with the, you know, the lodging, uh, tax dollars that are received and, and really clear on what that, you know, how those monies are being invested and how they're helping to increase revenue to the town of Estes Park. It's great that 67% of, of the revenue of, you know, the town budget is coming from, you know, folks who come and visit, if I understood that correctly. And then the other things were things that I had suggested that weren't necessarily captured in the letter. And that gets into some of the, uh, perhaps the bigger issues around, you know, retention, uh, cu- because there now hasn't been the greatest track record with retaining CEOs over the last five years. But, you know, things like that, retention, communication, uh, organizational culture. I, I, I've, I've brought those up and I appreciate Deborah's response to that. Uh, those are the kinds of things that I'd, I'd like to see, you know, what VEP is working on to, you know, to accomplish some of those things.
John, um, and, and to the other commissioners and possibly even to our trustees, perhaps we need to work on a method to provide transparency to our publics, which means the, the, the residents as well as, as the political bodies that are essential to the districts moving forward. I would say though, that it needs to be something that is unfortunately not 100% transparent to Breckenridge and Vale and, uh, Summit County. Um, other tourism areas that we compete with will go to our website to look for our operating plans, to look for our data, to find out what's working for us so that they can steal it and use it themselves. That is, um, detrimental to the whole process of our marketing Estes Park. That does not negate your need or the community's need to be able to find the information as they would like to have it at hand. Um, I say that as an individual who is not yet on the board, but who has lived with that competition for nearly 20 years. And it is a, a fine tight rope to walk that, um, perhaps as a new board member, we can find a way to, to make that transparency a little bit easier without being detrimental to the entire process of what the organization does.
Okay, thank you very much, Suzie.
Good point, Suzie, thank you.
I think what would also be helpful for Visit Estes Park is maybe a few weeks out from the next quarterly meeting, when we agree on a date, would be to have a list of questions that you may have thought of between now and then and hadn't communicated to them, so that they can zoom in and make the presentation, uh, more concise so that we can use our hour time better. And, um, I apologize for not being in attendance at the beginning. I need to thank Mayor Pro Tem Patrick Marchink for filling in for me. And I look forward to our next meeting. Are there any other comments from commissioners or staff at this time?
Yes, uh, so, so in the past, when we've been doing these quarterly meetings, on the town and the county kind of both took one, even our odd quarters. So the town would have the, the odd quarters and they would set the agenda with the questions they had. And then, uh, the county would take the even quarters. And then they, they'd talk to each other beforehand to set the agenda. And I think that's, uh, that'd be an easy way to follow.
Yeah, we, we do want to be responsive to what the, uh, trustees and the commissioners, um, you know, have an interest in. For the purposes of this meeting, since we had, um, two brand-new commissioners, um, some brand-new board member or trustees, et cetera. We what, just wanted to give some basic understanding of what the organization, how it's funded, how it started, how it operates, who operates it and that kind of thing. But I think we can really hone down to get more specific information in the future. Um, Abby, you can cor- correct me on this if I am wrong. Um, but my understanding from staff, the reason that the transparency page is harder to find is because you have two different audiences. You have your audience for the website that are your tourist, tourism-related. And then you have your, um, the transparency section is geared more for people who are looking for that kind of information from a governmental purpose or business purpose, et cetera. Somebody that's coming from Kansas to come out and enjoy a weekend in Estes Park isn't necessarily looking for those statistics.
Yep, Deb, you nailed it. Um, it's essentially the same thing. If you're going to go shop at Home Depot, you're not going to go look up how their CEO is functioning and what his personal life is like and what is going on. So we kind of try and keep the information for our guests from it. Um, and so we are a guest-facing website. And so that's why, um, you just have to be in the know to type in slash transparency. It's not something we necessarily hide, it's just that that's not the purpose of our website. That's one page that we've had to add on, um, in the past.
We might want to, we might want to look and see what other organizations do though, from a standpoint of maybe calling it a stakeholder site or stakeholder page or something along those lines. Because we're going to have taxpayers, we're going to have, um, government officials, we're going to have businesses that are wanting to see that information. Um, and we want to, we want to shine a, we want to shine a beam of light on all the good work you guys are doing, so.
Um, it is available through the partners page. There's a link on our partners page that people can get to the transparency page. So we've tried to make it extremely available to our stakeholders, um, as well as the town officials that need to know that. And then just while I have the mic really quick, I have to thank the staff, um, because they, they put this presentation together. I mean, it was a team effort, um, Rachel, Kevin, Josh, Kendall. Kendall put the whole beautiful thing together, she took all of our info and made it pretty. So our staff is incredible, they're very talented and I just had to thank them because they were a huge help with this. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone have any more comments? Thank you all for attending and I, I'm hoping that, um, well, I know I'll be, be here next time. I won't have the difficulties that I had. And, um, if it's hosted at Laramo County, would you like to alternate hosting? Or would you like to have us continue to host? I'm happy to do that. Any feelings that way?
Be sure we're having quarterly meetings. I think, need to start there for sure.
Okay, well, let's let Travis and Linda decide the logistics, if that's all right with them. And, um, we look forward to seeing you before the next quarterly meeting, I hope. And, um, at least at the next quarterly meeting. Thank you for attending.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, everyone, take care.
Take care.
See you, Wendy, soon.
Uh-huh, see you soon.